Okay, so welcome to the thirty-second meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Um, we're gonna go into agenda, public hearings, agenda item number one, application number two-one, dash two-two-four-two-three from Punch-Out! Incorporated, DBA eight fifty Leeward Pole. I think it's Mister James Lee.
Yes, he's in.
Mister Lee?
His, his audio is coming online, just a moment.
Mister Lee?
Yes, good afternoon, Administrator Pakaro, I'm here.
Okay.
I just got unmuted.
Very good. Mister Lee, go ahead and proceed and introduce your client as well.
Okay, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Uh, James H. Q. Lee, appearing for applicant Punch-Out! Inc., appearing by audio is Mister Richard Akimoto, President of Punch-Out! Inc.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mister Pakaro.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. This application was continued from February eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one's meeting. The public hearing was kept open to allow the applicant to comply with HRS two-eighty-one dash fifty-seven C. Applicant has now met the statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions, comments, or type of action?
Motion to approve application number two-one dash two-two-four-two-three.
Okay.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-one dash two-two-four-two-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I also vote aye, motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mister Lee and Mister Akimoto.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item number two, calling application number two-one dash two-two-five-seven-four from Seven-Eleven Hawaii, DBA Seven-Eleven Stores.
Madam Chair, Commission members, Kenneth Tho appearing for the applicant, also appearing is Blake Jopitaki, Director of Human Resources and Authorization for the applicant.
Yes, Chair, sorry, due to a conflict, I will have to recuse on this agenda item.
Okay, we may proceed, I see Commissioner Lee has, is now not online, okay. Uh, Mister Pakaro?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comment, type of action?
Application number two-one dash two-two-five-seven-four.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-one dash two-two-five-seven-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mister.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get Commissioner Lee back, please?
Okay, he's back in.
Okay. Okay, moving on to, um, preliminary hearings, we're going into agenda item number three, application number two-zero dash two-one-nine-zero-five from TBB Holdings Incorporated, DBA Teddy's Bigger Burgers.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Commission, Emmanuel Zabakalan, here on behalf, here on behalf of TBB Holdings, uh, DBA Teddy Bigger Burger, Bigger Burgers, I gotta slow down a little bit today. Um, we reviewed the investigative report and have no comments, and I can answer any questions you may ask.
Thank you, Mister Zabakalan. Any questions, comments for the applicant or type of action?
Motion to approve application number two-zero dash two-one-nine-zero-five.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-one, I'm sorry, two-zero dash two-one-nine-zero-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I also vote aye. Motion carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mister Zabakalan.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, moving on to agenda item four, application number two-one dash two-two-five-five-eight from Ride and Subway, Side, Ride and Sidewalks, Sideways, I'm sorry, LLC, doing business as Chronic Tacos.
Hi, my name is Eric Leon, I'm the General Manager and Authorized Agent for Ride and Sideways LLC. Um, and I've also reviewed the investigative report, uh, I have no comments, uh, more questions, I'm also here to answer any questions you guys may have about my application.
Thank you, Mister Leon.
Mister Leon, I do have one question. The investigative report indicates that, um, Timothy and Brianne McDowell each hold a one-hundred percent interest in the LLC. Um, can you clarify that? I imagine it's gotta be some different percentage?
Um, yeah, actually, I did submit their operating agreement, uh, they both have equal, uh, partnership in the LLC. Um, they're both husband and wife, uh, so they, they do contribute equally to the, to the business as well.
Okay, so it should be fifty-fifty?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Hearing none, uh, motion to approve application number two-one dash two-two-five-five-eight with the correction noted by Commissioner, Commissioner Miyashiro.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-one dash two-two-five-five-eight. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye, motion carried, application is approved with the noted changes from Commissioner Miyashiro. Thank you, Mister Leon.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon.
Okay, into the request part of the agenda, we're going into agenda item number five, request number two-one dash two-two-five-seven-seven from Hawaiian Craft Mead Company LLC, doing business as Manoa Honey and Mead.
Hello, uh, my name is Yuki Uzuhashi, I am the owner of Hawaiian Craft Mead Company. Um, and, um, I have this, uh, investigation report and, uh, everything is correct, or I don't know what to say, um, if any questions, I'll be there.
Thank you.
Uh, Mister Uzuhashi?
Yes.
Uh, this is a large space, you're asking for an extension, correct? Five thousand seven hundred thirty square feet?
Yes.
Okay. You folks are gonna be able to handle that amount of space?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, um, motion to approve, request number two-one dash two-two-five-seven-seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two-one dash two-two-five-seven-seven. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye. Motion carried, request is approved. Thank you, Mister Uzuhashi.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving into agenda item number six, request number two-one dash two-two-eight-three-two from Mister Nathan Wu.
Hi.
Doing business as Mezzo Bistro, sorry.
Hi, good afternoon, uh, my name's Nathan Wu, and, um, I'm here to, um, answer all the questions for my application.
Thank you, Mister Wu.
Mister Wu, I have a question, when did the, um, prior licensee, um, close or shut down for business?
Uh, I think it's June, um, twenty-twenty.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
To approve request number two-one dash two-two-eight-three-two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two-one dash two-two-eight-three-two. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye. Motion's carried, request is approved. Thank you, Mister Wu.
Thank you very much.
Okay, going into agenda item number seven, request number two-one dash two-two-eight-three-three from, I'm sorry, Noka Oi Liquor Licensing LLC, Mister Shin Sato. I don't see Mister Shin Sato online, is there anybody else to represent Noka Oi Liquor?
The licensee, uh, Nui Fakava?
Yes, sir.
Uh, is Mister Nishiyoka present? No?
Although, sir.
Okay.
The licensee is present, thank you.
Thank you. Can you go ahead and, um, uh, spell your, your name for the record?
Yes, yes ma'am, um, N as in Nancy, A as in Apple, I as in Eagle, N as in Nancy, I as in Eagle, U as in Utopia, middle initial is J for Josephine, my last name is F as in Frank, A as in Apple, K as in kite, A as in apple, V as in Victor, A as in apple, Fakava.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioners, any questions?
I see Mister Nishiyoka is on the line, is this his client?
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I just got on, I'm sorry, Greg Nishiyoka, um, for, uh, the applicant, um, we are an authorization.
This is for Noka Oi, uh, liquor, okay?
Yes.
Alright.
Apologize, I'm kinda new to this technology, just having a little problems getting onto the meetings.
No problem, Mister Nishiyoka, we're all just muddling through.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and this is former site of Mokupuni Restaurant and Catering, correct?
Correct.
Okay, when, when did the former, uh, licensee close business?
Uh, Mister Fakava, could you, uh, I believe March of two thousand twenty, they voluntarily canceled it.
Yeah, um, I do believe they physically left the property in January of two thousand and twenty, apparently according to their posting on the door. Um, and, uh, we actually entered a lease agreement with the owner, uh, February one of two thousand and twenty. Um, for the most part, yeah.
And, uh, it appears that the license was canceled in March of two thousand twenty also.
Okay, thank you. Uh, seeing no further questions, uh, motion to approve request number two-one dash two-two-eight-three-three.
Second.
And second to approve the request, number two-one dash two-two-eight-three-three, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 So vote aye, motion carried, request is approved. Thank you, Mister Nishiyoka and Miss.
Ma'am.
Fakava.
Thank you so much, thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving into agenda item eight, uh, we have a six-month review for TK World LLC.
Hey.
Hi, go ahead and, um, introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Takuro Ino, the owner of, uh, TK World LLC, DBA Popokimar, uh, he has security.
Hi, I'm Curtis Pedro, I was, um, authorized by the Commission to be posted up at the location as agreed upon, I had, when like, um, one of the generals told me to make sure that if I'm not there, I have two more other people there, which I do. We have our own shirts and everything ready to go. We keep everything on Qs and Ps, and we got the number one guy to not come and drink on premises or around premises like you guys agreed upon. I have kept, uh, location on Qs and Ps, no alcohol, nobody's been hanging around, everybody in the community loves it now. And I'm doing the best as I can to keep, also with Senate, they talk to me, so I also keep the whole area nice and clean.
I wanna, I want one of those shirts, Mister Pedro.
I know.
How do I get one of those shirts?
I know, look at him.
Gotta sell them at the store.
No, can't, you're a boss.
Mister Pedro, and, and Mister Ino, this is really good news considering, um, you know, the concerns that were, that, um, existed six months ago, so this is, um, really good and it's good to hear. Um, have you guys had any incidents, any problems?
Um, I got, I got one, um, question and I did discuss it with the owners and the bosses, that we're not gonna change what you guys provided with our liquor, um, our liquor timings. I do want, I do not wanna go up again, I do not wanna open up again. I wanna keep it as nine-to-nine, nine, uh, nine-to-five, period, that's it. I do not wanna go over and get a little caught up with all this nuisance around the area that has been working with HPD and other sources to keep the area nice and clean.
Okay, I believe we impose that as a condition on the license, right?
Can we keep it still on there?
Um, unless, unless it's changed, otherwise, I believe that was the, if, the conditions will continue to impose then on the license, yeah?
Yes, please do. I recommend it.
And gentlemen, I do have a comment, and, uh, Mister Pedro, I, I heard you say that the Commission authorized you to provide security. For clarification, we encourage the security, we don't authorize that.
Yes.
Clarify, and I do pass the location from time to time, and I do notice that there are a, a vast improvement in what we saw some time ago in terms of the photographs, so thank you for doing that, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I mean, I'm, I'm real well-known in the area, so I know how to deal with these gentlemen and these bad people and whatnot, but they show respect, and I show them respect, that's all they ask for. I mean, realistically, I'm a, I'm a local boy, so, you know, and it was pretty stiff in the beginning, um, I had to work with the new owners, try to help them, we helped with each other, and then it worked out perfectly.
Love to hear it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, did we, Commissioners, did we need to hear from enforcement or anything for the record?
Uh, yes, can, do we have somebody available from enforcement?
Yes, yes. Are you in? Room one-eleven.
One sec, ma'am.
Just a moment.
Supervising Investigator Catherine Fontaine.
I'm like, what's on, so we, we, um, regarding to the license, um, can you give us a brief report or there was any, um, incident and any type of violations, really, I think?
We received one complaint and actually haven't been able to follow up on it yet since it was just received yesterday, and that's it.
I believe there's a complaint against Sebastian, 'cause, um, he does not listen at times until I come downstairs, I'm on twenty-four-seven until the store is closed. And I came down and, um, he was sleeping on the side of the sidewalk, 'cause my guys can't control him. So I'm the very one who is the only one that can actually control him, not even HPD can control him. So I went downstairs and I got him off of where he was laying at, and about his open containers, I've been running out, giving him bags, and I'm, where the hell you getting this alcohol from, you're gonna get us in trouble, he understands and he moves on.
Okay, and if, if there is a violation, Mister Ino and Mister Pedro, then it'll be addressed by the Commission at a later time, okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Miss Fontaine.
Okay, Commissioners, I don't have a thing. I thought that was a decision.
Yeah, no action is required.
That's correct.
Thank you, gentlemen. Keep up the good work.
And then, um, how long do we gotta wait for another three to six months?
No, you folks are okay, I, I believe that, so just keep doing what you folks have been doing. We just, this was just to, uh, a checkup, to make sure that you were doing what you said you were gonna be doing when we approved the license, so keep doing what you've been doing.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. You guys have a good day and be safe.
You too, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving in, um,
Sure.
Chair, can we have a short recess? Think there's some technical difficulties we're having?
Your voice, the voice, no, the talk, the voice is um.
Madam Chair, motion for adoption of decision and order for agenda items nine to thirteen inclusive.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the um to a- approve the adoption of decision and order. For agenda items nine to thirteen as previously circulated, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
I also vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried um. Adoption of decision and order um for agendas I nine to thirteen has been approved. Okay, we are now into adjudication hearings. Ms. Nestie.
Good afternoon, Catherine Nestie Deputy Corporation Counsel appearing on the adjudication matters for today's hearing.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna call agenda item number fourteen for Vegan Hills.
Uh yes, I spoke with um the general manager Natsumiki Tommy. And um she had an unexpected uh family emergency that she needed to take care of. Um so she requested a continuance, I have no objection. Uh we are requesting to continue to April first twenty twenty one.
Motion to continue agenda item fourteen to April first twenty twenty one.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item number fourteen. Till April first twenty twenty one, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 Aye, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item fifteen, calling Stack Sports Bar and Grill. Hi, are you appearing for Stack? I believe you're muted, you're muted, we can't hear you. Uh you're still muted. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, we still can't hear you. Are you connected to your computer audio? Okay. Maybe and until she works out her technical difficulties, maybe we should move on to the next agenda item until we can. Remedy her situation.
Yes, let's do that.
Okay. Alright, um moving on, we'll move on to agenda item sixteen, Lonnie Kai Brewing Company.
Yes, I spoke with counsel uh Megan Cowell, she was recently retained. Uh she requested a continuance in order to request discovery, um I have no objection. Uh we request that this matter be continued to April first twenty twenty one.
Make your motion to continue agenda item sixteen to April first twenty twenty one.
Second.
It moved in second to. Um continue agenda item sixteen to April first twenty twenty one, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Let's for agen- let's return back to agenda fifteen, miss, is it Tao Hele Hele? Hello? You maybe you wanna sign back on, leave the room, leave and sign back on? Cause we're, we can't, we still can't hear audio. Okay, okay, uh let's call agenda item seventeen, Exclusive Restaurant and Lounge.
Aye, this is Kyle representing Exclusive.
Is it Kyle, Mister Miyamoto, please introduce your full name for the record, please.
Oh Kyle Miyamoto. I'm the general manager at Exclusive.
Ms. Nestie, if you could please read the charge?
Uh charge number one, on or about September twenty nine, twenty two, twenty nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee permitted liquor of any kind while in bottle, glass, or other container. To be open and readily consumable within the licensed premises before or after the hours established by the liquor commission. To wit, at approximately two fifteen, in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point two zero B. Of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Can you please re-charge two?
Yes. On or about September twenty ninth, two thousand and nineteen, at two fifteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to have the street and our primary entrances to the licensed premises. Unlocked during the time customers were in the premises, in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-two point two. Of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mister Miyamoto, how do you wish to plead a charge number one?
Uh can I explain everything first?
Uh no, you have to actually plea first and then we can give you the opportunity to explain after.
Okay, can I plead no contest with explanation?
Absolutely, and what is your um plea as far as charge two?
Charge two, I plead no contest.
Okay, thank you sir, uh motion to accept the no contest plea for charges one and two?
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea for charges one and two for agenda item seventeen, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Nestie, what is your recommendation for charge one?
Uh charge number one, this is a second violation, um the recommended fine is going to be. Uh a total of nine hundred dollars, that'll be seven hundred and fifty dollars plus uh the fifteen minutes times ten dollars. Uh which comes to again the total nine hundred dollars.
Thank you, and what is your recommendation for charge two?
Charge two is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Okay, um as far as charge one, when was the first violation?
The first violation had occurred uh April eleven, two thousand and eighteen. Uh the licensee was fined uh five hundred dollars at that time.
Okay, thank you, Mister Miyamoto, you you can um provide your explanation or comment on either charge one or two at this time.
Okay, on charge one, there was a. It was a pile of glasses that were being cleaned, that we left on the bar, it was in front of the the wash station. And the bartender was cleaning at that time, washing all the dishes, there was no customers there, no, nobody was near the liquor. But the agent went towards the one glass that had. Still had a drink in it, you know, but she was still washing it, and it was after hours, uh it was only me and. Myself and the bartender that I was working that day, I was a little bit busy, so. We just kinda pulled all the glasses and stuck it onto the end of the bar where the wash station was, and tried to get everybody out, you know, um. We weren't serving anything, uh we weren't like. Have liquor out for people to drink, you know, it was at the dirty station where we were gonna, where we were washing dishes, and as the agents were actually walking in. One of the agents actually yelled, don't stop washing dishes, and then he ran to the station and looked at all the glasses that was there, you know? Yeah. I don't know, I just felt like I shouldn't have got to tag for that, it's not like we were serving people, you know? It wasn't for consumption, we were actually really cleaning glasses at the time, you know?
Okay, thank you, um do you have any comment on charge number two?
Charge number two, a lot of people in there was myself and the bartender and the owners of the bar, they had a meeting at. At the end of the night, uh I locked the door because. I've, I thought it was okay because they're owners, so I don't, I don't, she explained to me that because they don't have time cards. They're technically not employees, so I still gotta leave the door unlocked, but at that time also. The the club next door to us got robbed after office two, you know, they left the door unlocked, guys rushed in there and robbed it, so I didn't want. My owners to be put in that predicament, so I locked the doors, but they had their meetings and we were cleaning up.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nestie, do you have any uh response to Mister Miyamoto's comments?
Uh just one clarification, um as far as. What I understand, the investigative report, there were a- observed approximately ten individuals sitting around the bar area. Um with several drinks out in front of some of the individuals. I believe uh a sample was taken from a glass that was in front of one of those individuals.
Okay, thank you.
There was five people.
Thank you, Mister Miyamoto, I'm gonna um make a motion, uh the motion is to approve the recommended fine of. Nine hundred dollars for charge number one and five hundred dollars for charge number two for a total of. One thousand four hundred dollars for agenda item seventeen.
Okay, second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine for charge one, nine hundred dollars, charge two, five hundred dollars with a total. Total penalty charge of fourteen hundred dollars, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mister Miyamoto.
Thank you.
Okay, let's return back to agenda fifteen and let's try to give. Miss Tao He- Hello Hello a chance again, go ahead and unmute, let's see if this works. Okay, we can hear you now, perfect, perfect. Okay, so um let's officially, let's call, recall agenda item fifteen, Stack Sports Bar and Grill. Please introduce yourself.
Aloha, my name is Isa Pessi Tao Hello Hello, I am the owner of Stack Sports Bar and Grill. Aside with my husband.
Okay, thank you.
Nestie, can you please read the charge?
Yes. On or about October seventh, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee. Whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, violating the terms of the Office of the Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu Emergency Order. Number twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework. Order implementing tier one, dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty. In violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Ms. Tao Hello Hello, how do you wish to plead?
Uh no contest.
Thank you, motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item fifteen, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Nestie, what's your recommendation?
Uh this notice of violation was issued was issued for. Uh insufficient contact tracing information and also failure to enforce the six feet social distancing requirements. This is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Tao Hello Hello, do you want to provide any comment or explanation?
Um I'll comment on the violation of social distancing. Okay, so that night, we were of course busy, um. Um honestly, it was a family that came in, that was part of the musicians that sang that night. So when the investigators walked in or the agents, they walked in, they were literally. Just saying bye to each other, so of course, um it's why night and it's hard. When we gotta continuously tell them that they gotta stay six distance, um six feet distance from. Each other even though you're family and stuff, but um. They were literally just saying bye to each other. And of course, we know the culture of how it is over here when you say bye or hi or. You know, it's contact, but um yeah, that's that's pretty much. What happened when they came in was that whole group. Um was saying bye to, bye to each other and they walked in and saw that and we got cited for that.
And thanks for the explanation and um are you folks doing contact tracing?
Yes, we are, um the contact tracing, it was like uh. We had to keep changing it because we were missing. Um when the agents came, they came multiple times and we always was missing something, so. I guess that night we were missing their phone numbers. Um and at that time, we didn't know we had to um have their phone numbers. Or have um an option on that list that said phone numbers were only. We thought that we only needed their names and their address, but now we do.
Okay, thank you, and I I can't tell you how to run your business, but once um. Things occur within the licensed premises, it is under jurisdiction, so you you do have responsibility to make sure there's. Compliance with our rules and other other laws, um so going forward, you know, I I just wish you the best of luck in. In that compliance, um my motion is gonna be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item fifteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item fifteen, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye, motion carried, a five hundred dollar fine is imposed, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go back now to agenda, um get back on the regular agenda, go back to agenda item eighteen, exclusive restaurant and lounge. Mister Miyamoto.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak over you, um Ms. Nestie, can you please read the charge?
Yes. On or about October second, twenty twenty, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of license. Whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, violating the terms of the Office of the Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu Emergency Order number twenty twenty dash twenty-seven. COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier one. Issued September twenty-third, twenty twenty, in violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Mister Miyamoto, how do you wish to plead?
Uh no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda I number eighteen, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Nestie, your recommendation, please?
Uh in this situation, investigator uh observed um. The bar was completely full, there's standing patrons. Uh everyone appeared to be in one cluster without being able to distinguish any groups. Uh no food was being served inside the premises. This is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mister Miyamoto, do you wanna provide any explanation or comment?
Uh explanation, uh there's no really explanation for that, it just got one really busy at one time, I was trying to get people out. We're trying to do a social distancing, but you know, the agents, everybody, they all walking at the same time, uh even the agent was like. You know, and it uh, the food wise, that's my bad on my part, we're actually serving food from other places, that's why. So but uh the agent explained to us that we have to uh, has to be part of our bill. So from there on, we opened up our kitchen and everything. But that, yeah, some bad time.
Okay, thank you, motion to prove the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item eighteen.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda number, agenda item eighteen, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye, motion carried, the fees imposed of five hundred dollars. Okay, moving to agenda item number nineteen, exclusive restaurant and lounge, Mister Miyamoto.
Aye.
Ms. Nestie, can you please read the charge?
On or about October thirty, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee. Whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, emergency order twenty twenty dash twenty-nine, COVID nineteen novel coronavirus. Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework, order implementing tier two. Dated October twenty, twenty twenty, in violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statutes.
How do you wish to plead, Mister Miyamoto?
What what, um is that the charge that they're not writing the correct whole number or something?
On that term, Ms. Nestie?
What is the charge? I'm not quite understanding.
Uh. The notice of violation was issued for uh several reasons, an employee failing to wear face covering. Uh insufficient contact tracing and failure to enforce social distancing requirements.
Okay.
I wish to plead, sir?
Uh plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number nineteen, all those in favor?
Vote aye.
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 I also vote aye, uh motion carried.
Ms. Nestie, what is your recommendation for this matter?
Uh this is also considered a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Mister Miyamoto, um and I'm starting, Ms. Nestie, did you need or want to add any other? Um comment or description of the violations other than what you previously stated?
Uh sure, I can give a little more detail, um the investigator in this situation observed. Um a party of eight individuals um seated in two booths adjacent to each other. Um he observed intermingling between the two booths. Um the investigator also observed uh an employee uh delivering drinks. Pulling down his face mask below his mouth to speak to customers. Uh and finally, the contact tracing log was checked by the investigator. Uh found to have fourteen entries made without full name, two entries made without an address. And one entry listing a telephone number for the cap Hawaii.
Thank you, Mister Miyamoto, do you want to provide any explanation to any or all of these allegations?
No, I, no, I'll take it, um I wasn't working that day, so I can't really explain, everything's all hearsay and I don't believe in.
I appreciate that, and more importantly, I wanna make sure you folks are complying going forward, so.
Yes.
Sure you do your best to understand what the nature of the orders are as they change and. Any questions in terms of your responsibilities as a licensee? Please check out our website or call administration.
Second.
Okay.
Motion to approve the recommended final.
Oh Commissioner Mewser, sorry, can I add a comment, please?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, I can't see.
I'm so sorry, uh Mister Miyamoto.
Yes.
You know, you come before us with these offenses or these violations. Happening all within a month or within relatively same proximity of time.
Yes.
And. I feel that it's irresponsible at this point, af- after being issued all these violations. That you didn't make an honest effort to remedy these issues, and these are serious violations. Um you know, even though it's it's issued as a proclamation. We expect the licensees to abide by these rules. Um to create it, to also create a safe environment for the patrons that visit your bar.
Yes.
Oh. Whether you were working or not, whether you own it or not, it just seems that. There's just a disconnect with you as far as how the seriousness of these violations. Um I don't wanna see you here again. You know, and you know, we're not over with the tier systems and there'll be another, you know, another reissued proclamation. I need you to assure us that you're gonna make every effort to comply. And to make an honest effort moving forward compliant.
Yes, I I adjusted certain things and I had my employees uh. Work out things, so now I I assign duties to certain employees that they have to take care of, so like me, I kinda watch the door now. I kinda limit who comes in and who leaves, like how much people come in now, and I have like a. One of my main bartenders, I have her kinda like watch whoever walks in, they make them sign in, take temperatures, sanitize their hands. And then the the waiter or waitress will come and seat them, and if there's no seats open, I don't let them in anymore. You know? Have to have a bigger, I, if they have a bigger group than five, I mean, I I know I changed to ten, but. When there are more than five, I would have them either go someplace else or split up the groups. You know, and um.
And how about the contact tracing, are you regularly reviewing it for the accuracy that it's completed?
Yeah, so um with the bartender, when she's taking down uh the temperature or whatnot, she's actually watching them write down phone numbers and. Having them put their name, their address, and their phone numbers, instead of um, I know what I, I know what, cause even I reviewed it, there was one time, one guy put like. Like he put like the tablet, that four two 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 two, whatever, you know, so we're kinda watching that now. You know, if the, if it's absurd, we we tell them to like either leave or like, if they don't wanna comply, they can just go. This is our livelihood too, you know?
Okay, sorry, um go ahead, Commissioner Mewser, sorry for interrupting.
Uh thank you, and I apologize because I don't see any anybody other than a couple people, any other questions or comments, commissioners? Seeing uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item nineteen.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda number, agenda number nineteen, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye. The recommended fine of five hundred dollars is imposed, thank you.
Thank you.
They're calling agenda item twenty, Platinum Lounge.
Good afternoon, members of the, Madam Chair, members of Commission Keith Kiuchi, attorney and authorized agent for the licensee. We waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Thank you, motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea, all those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Nestie, um in addition to your recommendation, can you provide us with some background on the nature of this violation?
Sure, um this is a first violation uh for violation of the mayor's order, having. Alcohol being consumed after the ten P, after ten P M. Um it was approximately ten oh six P M, so the recommended fine is five hundred and sixty dollars, this is a first violation.
Thank you, Mister Kiuchi.
Yeah, my, I talked to my client yesterday about this, these were four customers that came in, they were friends of the owner. They came in before ten o'clock, the owner went to the back, um they were waiting for the owner when. When the owner came back, it was about five or six minutes after ten, and they still had beer bottles in front of them. The owner was not happy because the owner's instructions, the bartender would be to clear it out. It wasn't cleared out, so there were clearly beer bottles in front of the four gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five sixty. All those in favor?
I vote aye. I vote aye.
Also vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carried. The fee of five hundred and sixty dollars. The penalty fee of five sixty is imposed. Thank you, Mister Kiuchi.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number twenty one. Um Lupino.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
Uh my name is Rea Ashley Delacruz, and I act as the accounting and office manager for Elupino.
Thank you, Ms. Nasty.
On or about June thirteenth, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee employed Jared De Masters in that section of the license premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed without said employee being properly registered with the liquor commission in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point five A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mister Delacruz, how do you wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
They moved in second to accept the no contest plea. All those in favor?
I vote aye. I vote aye.
I also vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carried.
Ms. Nasty, your recommendation, please?
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Ms. Delacruz, do you have any comments?
Uh none at the moment. Um other than the employee mentioned has since been registered.
Okay.
So um that has since been remedied.
Great, thank you. Motion to approve the recommends fine of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carried. The fee of three hundred and fifty dollars is imposed for agenda item twenty one. Moving on to agenda item twenty two, Lupino. Miss Delacruz, uh please introduce yourself again for the record.
I am the acting office and accounting manager for Elupino.
Ms. Nasty, can you please read the charge?
On or about October thirty first, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with any other laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license, or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, violation of the Office of the Mayor, City and County of Honolulu Emergency Order Number twenty twenty dash twenty nine COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework, order implementing tier two, signed on October twenty, twenty twenty, in violation of section two eighty one dash thirty eight of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Thank you, Ms. Delacruz. How do you wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
They moved in second to approve, um to approve the no contest, to accept the no contest plea. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye. Motion carried.
Ms. Nasty, what is your recommendation?
Uh in this instance, the investigator observed um patrons consuming alcohol after the ten o'clock cutoff. It was ten fourteen. This is a first violation, so the recommended fine is six hundred and forty dollars.
Ms. Delacruz, do you have any explanation or comment?
Um from what was explained to me from management and speaking with the employee, uh basically what had happened was um the employee who should have taken away the alcohol at the time that it was supposed to have, um when alcohol was supposed to have been stopped being served, did not enforce it in a manner where it was taken seriously. Um but we have since talked to that and to that employee and the rest of the staff to uh make mention that this is a serious uh thing to take into consideration, to enforce from that date forward.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of six hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the recommended fine of six hundred and forty dollars for agenda item twenty two. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye. The fine of six hundred, motion carried. The fine of six hundred and forty dollars is imposed. Calling agenda item number twenty three. Lupino, I'm sorry.
Um hello again. I am acting office manager and accounting manager for Elupino.
Would you state your name again, please?
Uh Rea Ashley Delacruz.
Thank you, Ms. Nasty.
On or about November fourteenth, twenty twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to ensure that its employee, Kilian Tomonaga, who is required to register with the commission, have his certificate of registration for the license premises readily available for inspection while on duty in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point five E of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
You wish to plead, Ms. Delacruz?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty three. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye. Motion carried.
Ms. Nasty, what is your recommendation?
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Ms. Delacruz, do you have any comment or explanation on this?
Um very similar to uh the first charge. Um this employee has since um remedied the situation and um has gone his uh he has since registered with the commission, so that's uh, that's a current status.
Okay. Have you folks um made all employees aware that they need to be registered with us and have their documentation available?
Yes, um again, this is not an excuse, but during twenty twenty with the whole COVID situation, um we were running on quite a skeletal staff to the point where um management was not, I think, as I would say they were not as strict in making sure they were checking, you know, who was current in terms of registration, and would we completely take responsibility for that? Um we have since uh definitely made sure that we are holding our staff and ourselves accountable so that um charges of these, of this nature does not happen in the future.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for agenda twenty three.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye. The penalty of three hundred and fifty dollars is imposed for agenda item twenty three. Sorry, motion carried. Sorry. Okay, last one. Calling agenda item twenty four, Lupino.
Oh hello again. Um I'm Rea Ashley Delacruz, and I'm the acting office and accounting manager for Elupino.
Ms. Nasty, can you please read the charge?
Licensee failed to file with the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu on or before August fourth, twenty twenty, a report as directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, twenty nineteen, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty, in violation of rule three dash eighty one dash seventeen point five four C of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Ms. Delacruz, how do you wish to plead?
Um oh yikes. I don't know if it's because I'm nervous, but the terminology has since slipped my mind. Um I.
Accept the plea, you can accept the plea denied or plea no contest.
Uh. I would plead no contest, but I I do want to explain. Um I initially mailed out the.
Okay, hold on one second. First, need to take action on the plea, and I'm gonna, and then you have a chance to explain, okay?
Okay.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty four.
Second.
They moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty four. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carried.
Ms. Nasty, what is your recommendation? Think you're unmuted.
Thank you. This is a first violation. Uh it was filed ninety days late. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Ms. Delacruz, you have the opportunity to respond.
Okay.
Comment?
So I initially mailed in the original um the gross liquor sales report that I normally submit annually, and I wasn't aware that it had never reached you guys until I got a letter saying that you guys never received the G L S report. So after getting the letter, I actually physically came down, reprinted the uh gross liquor sales report and brought it in in person. And so for me, I I feel as if I did my due diligence. Um in this situation, I I really don't like to be that kind of person who blames the U S Postal Service, but I really don't know what happened in this instance. Had I not gotten that um notification that you guys had never received the actual gross liquor sales report within a timely manner, I would have never known. And so um I think just for future instances, I I think maybe I should just walk it in in the future to remedy any sort of happenings of this nature. But um that's my explanation.
What is your recollection of when you mailed in the G L S report?
Well, it was maybe around mid-June-ish, mid-June. Because I still have, um whenever I actually um print anything out or mail it out, I I do scans, and I still have the PDF scans showing that they were scanned within early June of the same report that I submitted. So I don't know if if that would remedy anything. Um I know that you guys are going to base it in when you guys actually physically received it. So um that's that's all I have in terms of.
Thank you. Ms. Nasty, do you have any response or any further comments?
Uh just noting that I believe um filing starts in July. I don't think we received a a copy or any sort of scanned report um to verify any of that information, but um that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Commissioners, any questions? I'm gonna, my motion for agenda item twenty four is to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
It's been moved in second to um to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty four. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye. A letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item twenty four. Thank you, Ms. Delacruz.
Yeah, thank you.
They're calling agenda item number twenty five, New Green Tea. Mister Kiuchi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Members, Commission Keith Kiuchi, attorney and authorized agent for the licensee. We waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
They moved in second to um accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty five. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
I also vote aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carried.
Ms. Nasty, what is your recommendation, and please um provide us some background regarding this charge?
Sure. Um this is a uh mayor's order violation. Um at the time, uh it was takeout or carryout only. Um in this situation, the investigator noted um food and beverage being consumed within the premises.
First violation?
Oh yes, excuse me. This is the first violation. Recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mister Kiuchi.
So the um New Green Tea was not open, and this was a period of time that there was no dining and everything was takeout. So the owner was on the mainland. The owner had um a couple of employees that were still working, and even though they didn't open the bar, she told the employees you might as well go do something, you might as well go clean the bar. So they went in and cleaned the bar. So went in, when they went in and cleaned the bar, they made themselves a meal. They drank, and that's what they got charged for. So I want to make sure the Commissioners understand, it's not like they were open for dining. These were two employees that were cleaning the bar, that made their own food, and yes, it's a violation. That's why we plead no contest. That's also initially why we denied it, set it for a contested hearing, but those were the circumstances.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nasty. Any comments?
No, nothing to, nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty five.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I also vote aye. The penalty of five hundred dollars is imposed for agenda item twenty five. Thank you, Mister Kiuchi.
Thank you.
Okay, um going on to other business, agenda item twenty six, Liquor Administrator. Any legislative update?
Uh I testified on H B one thirty seven, House Draft One. And I believe Anna submitted testimony on House Bill one thirty six, House Draft One.
Yes, we did receive that. Okay, um we're gonna move on to agenda item twenty seven, Liquor Administrator, um administrative matters. Um weekly report to the commission.
I believe you folks received it.
There anything to report on this?
Nothing, nothing to report.
Okay. Calling agenda item twenty eight. We're gonna go, um this is for we're gonna go into executive session for this, for this matter.
Okay. Motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
They moved in second to convene into um executive session for agenda item number twenty eight. All those in favor?
I vote aye.
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 I al- I also vote aye. Motion carried. We are now um gonna convene into executive session to deliberate. Okay, we're on. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to convene into executive session. Um what we called the agenda item for agenda item number twenty eight on the liquor commission uh performance evaluation of liquor control administrator. Um at this, a- after convening into executive session, we will defer this action item and um pending some additional information requested from the administrative staff. Um so let's fight no action taken.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so I guess we're officially done in this.
Reading adjourned.
Adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening and a good weekend. Okay.